Welcome, everyone. Today is the, let me look here. Nineteenth of November, 2019 at 6:30. We'd like to begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, your honor.
Okay. As we begin our city council meetings now, we begin with public comments. So if there's anyone here that would like to make public comment on any item that is not on the regular agenda, you're welcome to come up and do that. You have a limit of three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and move on to our other items on our agenda. Ask the vice mayor, Gabriel, if he would take us through the considerations of changes in setting the agenda.
Thank you, mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is set. Now we will go to the next item. We have a presentation, and at this time, I would like to invite Natalie Flood to come forward, and she represents Community Gas, and she'll take it from here. Welcome, Natalie. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you very much, mayor and council, for having me here this evening. I appreciate it. So as you guys know, I'm Natalie Flood with Wyoming Community Gas. Wyoming Community Gas is a joint powers board that's made up of member communities in the Choice Gas program area, excuse me. So each year in April, we participate as one of the suppliers in the Black Hills Choice Program. And then based on how that selection period goes for us, the board gets together in June, we set our annual budget, and then the distribution is going to go back to each of our member communities. So 2019 was another great year for Wyoming Community Gas. I'd love to get to come and tell that story. We had an increase of 1,200 customers overall, 222 of those customers just here in Laramie. So that brings your total to more than 2,800 customers in Laramie that are choosing Wyoming Community Gas, and that equals an additional $2,000 for you guys this year in total distribution, which is awesome. So one other thing I wanted to point out really quick, we're always talking about year over year, right? How did we do this year compared to last year? I've been getting to tell this story for the last several years, so I wanted to look and see really how far have we come. So in the last five years, what has that meant for the city of Laramie? So in the last five years, we've grown by more than 1,100 customers just here in Laramie, and we've taken your total distribution from less than $10,000 in 2014 to more than $22,000 in 2019, which is crazy, right? And I'm hoping in five years' time, I can come back and I can say, man, in 2019, we really thought we were doing something, and look at us now. So we want to continue this trend. We want to continue to educate customers about the Choice Program and about what it means to choose Wyoming Community Gas specifically here in Laramie. So there are more than 11,000 customers that are eligible to make a Choice Gas selection in Laramie. So we've got about a quarter of the market choosing Wyoming Community Gas, which means we've got some room for growth. So all I would ask of you guys, tell everyone you know. Tell your friends, your family, your neighbors, anybody you come in contact with in April. Give Wyoming Community Gas a call, see what we can do for them. If we can get them signed up, it directly impacts the city of Laramie in a positive way, so we would love to get to continue to do that. So for this year's recipients, I'm going to bring them up one at a time and present them with their checks. First, I'd like to welcome Pete Gosar with the Downtown Clinic.
Natalie, after the checks are presented to them individually, we're going to ask all three to come up with you, and we're going to get a picture of all of you.
Okay.
So anyway.
Awesome.
Go ahead with yours, and then we're going to bring everybody up for a picture so we can archive this.
Perfect. Pete, for the Downtown Clinic, here is a check for Wyoming Community Gas for $7,485.11.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Honorable mayor, excuse me, and city council, thank you. I really do appreciate it. I was wondering if I could just hand you some shameless information about the Downtown Clinic?
Go into the city clerk, and she'll distribute it. Thank you.
So my name is Pete Gosar. Honored to have the job of Executive Director of the Downtown Clinic. And for those of you who don't know, which I'm sure you do, we do uninsured, low-income health care. We've cut it easier and made it a little more memorable for me. We believe everybody in the community is valuable. Everybody deserves care, and everybody can help. And I think without your support, without Community Gas's support, without the ratepayers of Community Gas in Laramie, that would make it much more difficult. And although those statistics are, I'm very proud of, nearly 500 people, we are the primary care provider, 2,700 visits, volunteers, right? 1,200 volunteer medical hours given to our community. I think it comes back to just, I have a real quick story, if you would indulge me. This came in just last week. "I never imagined I would one day find myself simultaneously homeless, penniless, and seriously ill. Turns out, I did. After losing my employment, income, and health insurance, I experienced the lowest point of my life, nearing retirement age and having a difficult diagnosis. I made an unattractive candidate for pretty much any job that I was qualified to do. I luckily found a decent-paying part-time job in Laramie, and shortly thereafter, discovered this amazing health clinic. The Laramie Downtown Clinic is truly a lifesaver. I consider it to be among Laramie's best community service organizations, especially for those who have hit a rough patch in life. The people making this clinic possible have my undying gratitude and are worthy of all this support our community can give them. That's why we do the work, and so thank you for allowing us to do that work."
Great story. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ted Kramer with the Laramie Soup Kitchen. Here you go, Ted. On behalf of Wyoming Community Gas, here's a check for $7,485.11. You're welcome.
Well, thank you, mayor and council. This is really a great evening for us. We always look forward to this distribution. It is hugely beneficial to our operations. As you know, we do offer meals to anyone who comes in, whether they're hungry or whether that they're just in need of social interaction. And we are seeing an increase. Last year, our average was 80 people a year, a day, and this year, it's 89 people a day. It's really impressive, the numbers of people coming in, but it is forming a great community at the Soup Kitchen. People call it home. It's their place that they like to go every single day and be a part of something. And so we are achieving that community that we're looking for as well, which is great, which is what we're going for. If it has been a little while since you've come down to the Soup Kitchen, we happen to be having an event this week. So Thursday evening is our Business After Hours, an open house from 5:30 to 7:00. You're all welcome to come down and sample some of our food to get a sense of the food that we are preparing each day for the individuals who are coming in. So I encourage you to come to that if you're able to, and thank you again. We really do appreciate this gift through the Wyoming Community Foundation. It does many things in our community, so it's great. Thank you so much.
You too.
Okay, and the third recipient I'd like to welcome up is Mitch Kuschman with Interfaith Good Samaritan. And here is your $7,485.11 check, Mitch.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. No problem.
My name is Mitch Kuschman. I'm the president of the board for Laramie Interfaith, and I really want to thank Natalie and Wyoming Community Gas for this check. It's, we've discovered that we work really hard to try to get food, and we try to get some help with rent and utilities and everything else like that for some of the people that are coming in to prevent them from actually losing their house, or in some cases, going hungry as well as their families. And this really helps us to keep up with need. We've recently discovered, just our last weekend, we had a drive-out. Many of you may have seen them at some of the stores, and we actually had one of our best weekends ever with about 6,000 pounds, and we discovered that that was short for our Thanksgiving meal distribution. And so even though that we're doing better at some of the things that we do, we find that the need is still increasing. Matter of fact, if you've looked at our website today, we've discovered that last year, we had 350 families, that individual families that needed some distribution for our Thanksgiving meals, and we discovered today that the request was for 459 families. And so you may see on your webpages and things like that, if you see any of our posts, that we need another 100 turkeys by Friday. So another shameless ask. But anyway, I want to really thank you and the board, the council, for allowing this to occur and helping to select us as well, so thank you, and Natalie.
Everyone, come on up. It's picture time. Counsel?
Jane, oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Rest of us are going to go play basketball.
I couldn't get justice.
One, two, three.
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted, before these three groups leave, let me just make a comment about, you know, this is a very important part of our community, all of you. And it's with, the Finance Committee for the city, each year gets the privilege of accepting from Wyoming Community Gas these funds and then deciding where we can put this money that comes from them to the best use and to work. And we hardly ever struggle because you are such an important part of our community, and you represent us so well, and we appreciate that. We appreciate that you have reached out and continue to reach out for those that have needs, the city cannot, we don't have the mechanism to do all that you do. So again, thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for how you represent the city of Laramie. Thank you for the face that you put before our community because they appreciate that, we appreciate that, and we all work together very well. Again, thank you for all you do, and happy holidays, and hopefully you can find those extra 159 turkeys. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one proclamation tonight. I'd like to read that at this time. This is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturdays. Whereas the government of Laramie, Wyoming celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018, and whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community, and whereas 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said that day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants, and that they have not been to before or would have otherwise tried, and whereas 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season, and whereas 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year, and whereas Laramie, Wyoming supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as mayor and president of our governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So.
Great.
Great. Okay, and then I'll give this to our city clerk, and you'll get that to whoever wants to accept it. Now we have a public hearing, and I'd like to ask the city clerk if you would read the notice of a public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on November 19th, 2019, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following. Original ordinance 2006 amending LMC 5.09, Sections 5.09, 105, applications for licenses and permits requirements, including alcohol server training, and requiring licensees to attend to tavern meetings annually, and Section 5.09.800, point system violations related to tavern meetings. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the city of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So at this time, if there's anyone that would like to come forward and comment on this public hearing, you're welcome to do so. Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Now we move to announcements. I believe we have some announcements, at least one.
Honorable mayor, city council, we've got two announcements tonight. The first one, I'd like to remind you all that there is a public meeting tomorrow on the signalization of 22nd and Reynolds. That's at 3:00 PM at fire station number two, which is 1558 23rd Street, I believe, but expect that to be well-attended and have lots of information, lots of input from the community related to that signalization of that intersection. The second one is, if you may or may not have heard, we had the Zamboni breakdown this last Friday night about 9:00. The Zamboni's not so worthy as the announcements, but it is the staff and their functionality after the Zamboni broke down that I think is very worthy to recognize today. First off, that night, we had a fleet mechanic come out, Daryl Wilmroth, came out and inspected the Zamboni and gave it every effort he could to get it running. After that was unsuccessful, our ice recreation coordinator, Devon Stalder, spent some time organizing and developing a plan to help keep us open and keep us moving through the use of shovels and flooding the ice through the weekend. And then yesterday, by 2:00, Daryl Wilmroth, my facilities manager, and Devon Stalder all were able to work on the Zamboni and get it back up and running. So we really didn't lose that much. Unfortunately, we did lose turkey curling, but we had the outstanding efforts of those staff members that were very vital to the success of the Ice and Event Center. Just wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
Mr. Pfizer, since the turkey curling went south, do we still have turkeys to? I think we have someone that's interested.
Honorable mayor, those turkeys were donated as intended to the community food drive, so they were donated as intended.
Thank you.
They were a little less tenderized than if they were.
Zamboni is alive and well. The next item I have is, are there anyone on the city council that has, by the way, if you have an agenda, we have an item that is being moved to a future meeting on staff recognition. We'll do that at a future meeting. The next item is disclosures by the city council members of any, anything that you have that would be in conflict on the items that you're discussing tonight. Any conflicts of interest that anyone has?
Item.
Item. Well, we have the consent agenda also. Okay. Next, we'll move back to the vice mayor. If you would go ahead and take us through the approval of the consent agenda.
I would move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. Could we have roll call?
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay, the consent agenda then has been approved. We'll move now to the regular agenda. Item number 11 on the regular agenda is Councilor O'Doherty.
I move the council move to approve original ordinance number 2006 and ordinance amending LMC 5.09, Sections 5.09.105, application for licenses and permits requiring, requirements, including alcohol server training and requiring licensees to attend to tavern meetings annually, and Section 5.09.800, point system violations related to tavern meetings on second reading. Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. Discussion, oh, go ahead. Our city clerk, Nancy Bartholomew, will introduce.
Thank you, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is a second reading of original ordinance number 2006. Before I forget to give you the detail, I have emailed all the license holders or sent a letter to those that I did not have an email address for to let them know that this ordinance was being presented to council. I haven't received any public comment through our office to share with you, so I just wanted to put that out there before I forgot. If you notice on your cover sheet today, the city attorney and I, based off from first reading, have a recommended amendment based off from the conversations that we had. One of the issues that came up was that the tavern meetings, it wasn't specified who was organizing those meetings, so we have a proposed amendment there for you, if the council wishes to make that an item. The items before you in this ordinance came as a result of the ad hoc alcohol committee that concluded in February of this year. They recommended not only requiring two tavern meetings annually for each licensee to attend in order to obtain their liquor license renewal, but also to require alcohol server trainings, to have training within 90 days of employment for all employees that have access to alcohol, whether they're serving, managing, and whatnot. With that, if you have any questions regarding the ordinance itself, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for our city clerk? It's been the second reading. All right. I've asked the public if there's any questions that they have. Seeing none, we'll go back. Any comments from the council?
Is this appropriate time to bring up the amendment?
Yes, it would be. Councilor O'Doherty.
I move the council move to, council move to amending Section LMC.
You moved to.
I move that council move to amend, wait, it doesn't, okay.
Go ahead.
Doesn't make sense to me. Okay. Section LMC 5.09.105H by adding that, quote, "tavern meetings" to be noticed and organized by the city, end quote, "before failure to comply."
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by the vice mayor, Pete Gabriel. Discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, if I understand the amendment correctly, I believe I do, it's fairly plain language. This is just to make sure that people are receiving timely notifications, and you need to attend these, and it's a requirement of your holding the liquor license, and they'll be duly noticed so that they can plan around that, make sure they can be there, their representatives can be there, right? That's.
Right, and the city will be making the notice.
Yep, all right. And we discussed also, you know, some of the more details of that process, and I think those meetings will be called from the city through our police department and with some cooperation from the sheriff's office. Is that correct? I guess that's a question for the city clerk, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Those meetings would be organized with Chief Stalder and myself.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Any other comments, questions regarding this amendment? Anything from the public? Any comments again from the council? Let's do roll call on the amendment.
Harrington.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay, so the amendment now is a part of the ordinance, and so let's go back to the ordinance as amended. Any other comments, questions from the council? Councilor O'Doherty.
I feel confident, since the licensees have, they're in touch with the clerk's office, that they have enough information, and if they oppose to it, we would have an audience, so I feel like.
And we have one more.
About this. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Weaver.
On that note, I think that's worth mentioning, is that there were tavern owners and licensees that were involved with this process and certainly had ample opportunity to provide their feedback along with the other stakeholders that, you know, requested that ad hoc committee and the review, and let's hope that that's reflective of the general consensus for licensees. We have no reason to believe otherwise, and hopefully this will make a positive impact.
And there was a public hearing held today.
Sure.
And no comments on that, so it looks like things are moving along. Councilor Pierce.
Yeah, it's not onerous, so it's fine.
All right. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions?
I just have one quick comment. Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to shout out Nancy. I think, thank you for putting in the extra effort to reach out to the license holders despite them not having public comment. I think that was a good gesture on your part, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to the vote? Roll call.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay, so that item passes, so now goes to third reading, and I would expect that to be on the consent agenda since it seems to be moving along fairly well. Now we move to the public comment period again. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments to the city council on any item, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is asking the council if there's any future council work sessions, topics that they would like to have considered for a work session. We are moving along very quickly, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question about a work session topic that's been requested by staff that I certainly support, and I think the council's made clear, and that's the city property, land use and planning work session. Are we thinking that that's going to be something that we'll see getting closer to being scheduled after the conclusion of some of the work that we're doing with Fourth Economy and some of those groups? Is that the timing that we're hoping for on that one? Mr. Mayor, I guess that's a question of the city manager, and she's thinking about it.
I am thinking, certainly I think that what you suggest makes sense. Is it purposeful? No. The reason.
And I didn't mean to imply, I just.
Is because we've had more time-sensitive matters, and this is not necessarily as time-sensitive as what else we've seen this fall. But I think you're right. We'll have the economic development plan presented to late January, and then it might make sense to talk.
Development Plan presented to late January, and then it might make sense to talk more about this land, which, and this work session was specifically tailored to the land on Boulder between the rec center and the high school.
Counselor Weaver.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that's more or less what I thought, and I think that makes perfect sense. I was just curious because it, it's a topic that certainly has relevance to other property around the community and other plans that we might be trying to make from a policy level. And it would make sense to have it follow maybe some of those recommendations. So, it sounds like that's working out fine. I think the timing is just fine. Just wanted to know when we might look forward to seeing it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands for topics for consideration for the future. So, now we move to the next item, item number 14, which is Counselor Pierce.
Yeah, I move to adjourn to executive session regarding litigation, Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral three.
Second.
It's been seconded that we adjourn to executive session. All in favor of adjourning to executive session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will begin our executive session at 7:10.